All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:31. And we are gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Call of silence. All right, so the first thing we have is to amend the agenda. Would anyone like to amend the agenda today? All right, hearing none. Next step is to approve the previous minutes, which were our April 9th meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes April 9th.
I will second that. Do we have any discussion on the previous minutes? I think you had found something in there.
It's the red, the red corrections, are those already counted for? I mean, in the minutes? I mean, someone's written in red, some of the corrections. At least the correction that I had.
Oh, those, I think those are notes that Deb put in from the agenda, that were only on mine.
Okay, around here, okay.
So what she did is she took my copy that's in there and just used that as a reference. I had those as notes for me last week, so, or, so they're not corrections.
Well, okay, I think what I had suggested has been corrected. Okay. Yeah.
And Jeffrey, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Ryan?
Aye.
All right, so that has passed. Do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda? Hearing none, we're gonna move right into new business. First up, we have an action item. We're gonna consider appointments for May 2nd, 25 through April 30th, 2026 terms.
Okay, so I have a list of all the positions up for appointment. I contacted all the board and commission chairs, as well as the individuals who's seats were open. They've all got back to me and indicated whether they want to continue or not. If they did not want to, I don't have them on the list. There were no other people, there's no contested slots, so we didn't have to go through that. And I have taken a name off since the one that we've gone through, so I will read through the list. And you can either appoint them as a slate or appoint them individually. So the first, and this is, they're all annual appointments. They all run May 1st to April 30th. So first is our Assistant Town Clerks, that's Riley, and Deb Olmstead. Now there, Riley runs it, Deb gets appointed as well, because she can take care of business in Riley's absence. Town Treasurers, Natalia and Riley for backup, Assistant Treasurers, excuse me. Zoning Administrator is Hallie. Assessor is Michelle Pingree. Our Town Attorneys are the same Town Attorneys, Shehe for Long and Them. Town Service Officer is open, and through some correspondence with somebody who was kind of interested, it turns out the state has eliminated that from a required appointment. And anyway, I know you've been in contact with the person to see if there's other ways that that person could serve.
What is a Town Service Officer?
In statute, it was a position that, kind of in the absence of something else, would help facilitate services from residents in need and service providers. Would you say that's accurate?
Okay.
That we haven't had one since I've been here. It's always on there, but it seemed to me that it's with the Resource Center and the MASC, the Preventive Partnership, that they do all of that. But if you were a community that didn't have access to that, that would be the person who would volunteer to help. Our Dog Control is a PD. Custodial Officer for the Judicial Bureau is our PD. Health Officer is Andy Vittipol, who serves in our Fire Department. Regional Planning Commission is me. Transportation Advisory Council, which is the subcommittee down at the Regional Planning Agency, is open. Diane Foltz had been in that position in the past. Joint Rivers Commission. The alternate has been open for a while. Jim Bennett does attend those meetings when they occur. Solid Waste District, then that's me. What they do is, they act kind of as a representation between the state and the regulatory departments that oversee trash removal, the BNP's, things like that. So we have a seat on of it. Most of the towns that are involved either have municipal trash collection or a transfer station. We don't have either one of those, so it's kind of, I don't, I go to the meetings when they ask me to go to the meetings, but generally it doesn't apply to us. Senior Solutions, Sally Laurent. Tree Warden is me. Paradise Park, Jim Bennett, Arnie Swanson, and Carolyn Dugas. Planning Commission, we have an opening there. Mike Walter, Mike Welker would like to continue. Development Review Board is John McGovern and Kathy Marsh. Kathy is my wife. Conservation Commission is all open. Jedi, no appointments. And Energy and Sustainability, no appointments. Is there any question?
I think we could probably, like, see it as a sleeve. Those are comfortable with that? Or do you want to do individual?
So, just to clarify, the Jedi, there's a name on here, online.
Right.
So.
But, yeah, I don't know, it's ready to.
Got it. I think that person, they're talking about that this week at this last meeting. So that's good to know. I was curious.
I don't know what's gonna happen, but I'm pretty sure that's on their agenda.
I'd make a motion that we vote on this list.
A second.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 All right, so those have all passed. Next up, we have a discussion item, Vision Public Outreach.
So, what the heck is that? As we've discussed a little bit in the past, and I know we'll discuss further, is, I don't wanna say, we'll revisit. The idea is to look at where we've been and make some determinations of where we want to go. That, you know, what I would like to be able to do is to provide whoever comes next with a pretty clear idea of what the expectations are from the community and from the board. So do we want to make sure, you know, get our taxes down as low as possible? We don't care about services or the other way around? We want to be the best community ever and have fountains on every corner and parks everywhere? Stuff like that. Or somewhere in between. And since we already do have, you know, bond authorization for light removal, we have bond authorization for facilities repair. We have some bond authorization for road, water, and sewer improvements. We have a little bit to keep going. When I say a little bit, that's, you know, totals almost $5 million. But as far as the workout that would result, it's not all that much. So what, what the idea here is, is to just get a sense, you know, start out very big in general and kind of narrow it down. So by the time we get to the next town meeting in our budget discussions this year, to look at what we want to do for capital savings in water and in sewer and in the general fund? What kind of debt service does the community have an appetite for? What do they expect to be done with those, that debt service? And Pete, I, where I think this is more challenging. It's always challenging to say we want to spend more money. It's also challenging to say, no, we can't fix this, or the roads aren't getting done. None of it happens by magic. And when you look at the state budget, you know, numbers are like, construction costs are up 40%, and they're reducing the money being allocated for roads and sidewalks and all that. So grant money's gonna be more difficult. So it really is, I mean, from my perspective, the state is kind of in a dumpster fire. Education is messed up, healthcare is messed up, state funding is messed up. Law enforcement is messed up, addiction is messed up. And you can't point to any of them, I don't think, and say, oh, they saw that problem and now they're, they're looking to fix it. And I often say, we're the ones at the bottom of the rung, so when the state stops funding things through there. And it's not like people expect things to stop. They still want to have a safe community, they still want to have competent education and all those kind of things. So do you batten down the hatches and do a slow spiral into maybe where we were? I wasn't here, but in the 80s and 90s, and I hear stories of, you know, Main Street having buildings on it that weren't good. We had whatever was going on at the block. Or there's always been support, you know, even the last couple of budgets that have been super challenging, you know, for funding, as long as they see the results. That's not a top end, you know, you can't keep doing it. So the first thing that I did is, in this last week's newsletter, I put a list of links of public forums that were fairly well-attended that took place in 2012. And it was a series that Bob Haidt put on, and there's an introduction, introduction, and then, I don't know if they were every week or every couple of weeks, but he took a different segment of town. And there's a lot of photos and all that, so that you can see what the community looked like. And if you weren't here, I think you would be really surprised at just how unsightly different areas of town are and how much of an improvement they've come. The other thing it shows is that some of these things were discussed in 2012, like the development where the apartment building is going, that didn't get built for 13 years. So it doesn't happen overnight, and tons of money got spent, and all kinds of planning grants. And then, and then I'll stop, but what has happened isn't by chance. I mean, it isn't like a community that started off with a clean slate and you just say, let's build it out like this. But it was, these are some of the things we want, and we do want to pay for it. And then you get wild cards, like the dam's gonna fall down, and you gotta spend a whole bunch of money on that. But when it happens so incrementally, sometimes you lose the appreciation of the work that has been done. And everybody who lives here is paying for it right now, so we're all a part of this. So with that, I'd like to put a topic like this on the, on the agenda fairly regularly, and then see, how do you want to do this assessment? Would you like to revisit some forums? You want to do surveys or things like, you know, there's a lot of different ways you can do it, and it's not an immediate thing, but that's the general sense. Can we get to this budget season and say, okay, we would like to have $6 million in road and water and sewer improvements over the next 10 years? And here's a priority list of communities. Do we want any more parks? Do we want playground expansion? Do we want to fix up the exchange building? You know, and all of those kind of things, that there's not a right answer. But if you don't start planning for it, it doesn't happen overnight.
So I'm just wondering, just for the simple-minded ones of us, how about photos of before and after? Would that be possible, so that videos aren't gonna have to be?
Watching the whole thing?
Yeah, because I, yeah, I'm just thinking before and after pictures?
Yep.
Possible?
It is possible. I met with Bob Haidt, who is the keeper of every photo ever, last week, and I'm meeting with him again, with that general concept of, the rail yards is one obvious thing, where the diner is, is another really obvious thing right now in the downtown. But there's a lot of other more subtle things, so yes, well, that'll be part of it.
Yeah. Okay. So when do we start viewing those as a community?
Well, like, I mean, those, well, that's, it's kind of up to you. Like, I think the first thing is, you know, maybe at one of the next two meetings. Like, okay, I just gave you my big pitch. Do you, is it your sense that we need to batten down the hatches, keep our taxes right in line? Because we really don't know what's coming now, it's not the time. Even though we're not gonna spend the money, but you're gonna be making provisions to spend the money? Or just the general sense of, you know, I think I would be more comfortable if we really upped our capital savings, so that when we did projects, we could pay cash and not take on debt right now? That could be, not written in stone, but it's, okay, let's start questioning what all this looks like. So if, for example, fixing the sidewalks on Union Street, or what was the thing? You know, that's, that's an area, and it can be things like this. Here's where some bad sidewalks are, so it's a simple one. All right, sidewalks are $130 a foot, $150 a foot, so it's gonna cost somewhere around $2,000 to replace the sidewalks on them. All right, do you want to pay cash for that? Or do you want to make that part of a bond for a bigger project? And, you know, general parameters, this is, if we bond a million bucks, it costs us $85,000 a year for 20 years? Do you want to do it that way? And we can start checking those things off, and then you can start saying, okay, well, here's a bond package, maybe. We want to do this at the same time. So that doesn't happen at a meeting. That happens, you know, over time. So we can get more focused. If you like, I can take suggestions on specific things you would like to talk about in that overall umbrella, you know, meeting by meeting.
Maybe it's something we keep on the agenda to just keep it rolling and keep thinking about it and keep moving in that direction.
That, I think so, and I think at some point, I get nervous about public forums and surveys, because I do think it gives maybe sometimes a louder voice to the few who participate. But then again, the few who participate are taking the interest, so they have to be someplace. But, or maybe we, we talk about this at every meeting, and then we set aside a couple of weekends to have a professionally curated community forum, so that there are all those, go up and put your little yellow dot here where you think it's important? You know, all of that kind of stuff, to kind of, to get some of that information, so.
Yeah, I guess my concern is the lack of participation of the public, and I don't know how to make that better. I know the Democratic group tends to have good attendance at some of the events I've been to, but I don't know if that's because that's a cohesive group already. I just feel like people are more inclined to complain after the fact rather than get involved upfront. I'm just struggling with that.
I'm not sure either, because you and I have attended a lot of those from the Democratic Committee. And I'm not sure it's the Democratic Committee, or is it the topic?
Right.
You know, because they did a lot about politicians, so that was well-attended because it was an election year type of thing. I don't know.
Right.
I have the same concern. How do you get people to, more than five people who are interested to come and, you know, pick a majority of people?
Pictures as opposed to videos, so people like to commit the time.
Right.
And I don't know that time's the issue, I don't really know, but I just.
Dump everything on you guys.
Correct.
But you were elected. And for me, who has been elected, it bothers me when I hear, I don't want to make a decision, let's go talk to the public. You guys ran to represent the public. We're not a democracy, we're a representative of the public. So there's that. People can choose to be as involved as they want, but the boards ran. And just with the way things are designed, there's never, other than with a resignation, a majority of the board that's up. And you can't do everything in a year. So when a direction is set by the elected officials of the community, and it's not just here, you got the DRB that's got to approve things that are gonna get bid, there's some checks and balances. Let's say you start going down a road, and the community all of a sudden starts paying attention and says, wait a minute, they're not gonna do that, but we want it. Well, in a good way, that causes different points of view to be represented during elections, and it doesn't have to be contentious, it could happen to be, I believe that we should turn the prison farm into pasture land, I believe it should be 40-story condos. And then people vote, and then when they vote, you get a message and it goes out that way. So, and I mentioned this before, where I came from, it was a very engaged community. That didn't mean that there was a single voice. It meant that there were more people on both sides arguing with each other. So it didn't provide clarity, it just provided more input, in a good way. But I mean, it's not like everybody go, oh, no, I understand that, we all agree, that's.
No, no, I don't expect that, but I just, to be honest, frankly, I'm just tired of this Windsor-Vermont Happenings Facebook post, and just the negativity there. And if people would engage legitimately upfront, rather than snarking behind people's backs, I just feel like that would be an indication that there was some healthy interaction. So I'm not seeing that.
I agree. Right.
Uh, two things, I think, as we, like, delve into what Tom's asking us, I think there's a lot of different ways to do that. I mean, probably the most important way is that, as, you know, Tom kind of said, hey, we all ran, we all got elected, we all have a lot of connections in the community. I think some of it is kind of just feeling out what your constituents think and where people are at with some of these ideas. We don't even really, we've got to kind of get an idea of what we're even thinking of. But I do think you can utilize, you know, there is a fair amount of people that do participate in Tom's surveys. I think that's one avenue. And I also think social media, you know, you have to filter out a lot of junk on there, but it is a good way to relay information. It's really the way now. And between videos and, you know, pictures, all these things, I think you can start to get a feel, and you have to just kind of filter out noise and nonsense, and then actual, like, information. But it does get things talking in town, and I think you guys are all very good about putting your ear to the ground and understanding what's going on out there in the community. So I think that's kind of a big part of it, it's gonna be on us to, to maybe seek out people and seek their opinion on some of these things. It's my thought.
Yes.
And I actually, I think, if I understood correctly, I think you had talked about having availability of select board members for people to come and talk with us designated times. Did I get that correct? I mean, I actually am looking forward to that, if that's in the.
I gave an example of when Woodstock wanted to buy their water system.
Yeah.
They, the board said, okay, we're, we're gonna be everywhere, two at a time.
Right.
Awesome.
Go to, go set up a harpoon for, you know, like that.
I really, I would be, I would be very interested in doing that. But I think that gives opportunity, and proof's in the pudding, they show up, but they don't, you know?
I think we can start putting, yeah, just, I'll put on the agenda, or just send to me, give me some ideas. Like, where could you meet? And with summertime, it's outside, there's little, you know, all of that kind of stuff. And like, I think they said they had some, like, 40 different meetings over a period of time, and almost all of them were not well-attended.
Okay.
But they got the word out pretty well.
Yeah, I like that.
Right.
There's been a big trend in law enforcement to do this. They call it coffee with a cop, they're kind of staged events and something like that. Coffee with a select board member, or wherever you want to do, lunch, dinner, beer, but have, you know, that type of event. And, you know, like Tom said, I don't know that they're always the best attended. Oftentimes, it's people that are already in that circle of the people that are gonna show up to the meetings and report. But it's a good way to have a formal thing, like I said, like the coffee with a cop. Some places it works really well, other places it's so-so. But even just showing up at the, you know, Boston Dreams, and two of us sit down there and for three or four hours in the morning rush and talk to people and just say, hey, what do you think? That sometimes goes a long way, and it spurs conversation.
I like it.
And I can put some, like, basic, like, everybody wants stuff because there's a price tag. So I can give, like, some magnitudes of scale, like, this is how much it, if we wanted to save $500,000 a year in a capital fund, how many pennies on a tax rate is that? Or how much, how many pennies is every $100,000? How many pennies is a bond payment? That kind of thing. Something that made me think, where is difficult? My wife on the, on the library board. And you hear about things that the library needs. Well, the town, I hope I'm not stating this, but the town got the library for free. Somebody donated that building way, way, way back in the day, so the town never paid for it. I think there's a community sense that it's our responsibility, each generation, to maintain that. If you want to have a library, you can't say, I'm not gonna do that. And the, and the town's always supported the library, so it's not like that doesn't happen. I was talking to somebody the other day that, I think the town bought Runnymede Pond for $100,000 at heart, back in the day. Can you imagine if they would have said no? Could you imagine if the town would have said no to the fairgrounds when that land was donated? That all of these things, those are the things that really make a community unique and fun and all that. Nobody wants to spend the money on the water and sewer until it doesn't work. But I think you have to dig a little deeper when it's, do we, we're here now. Do we want to contribute to that quality of life? But quality of life is also a tax burden that's reasonable, so.
Ryan?
Do you see any federal funding? I know you talked a little bit about it, or, and the state funding via federal stuff that you think is on the chopping block, or has been allocated that we're used to getting that you think is, we're not gonna see?
Uh, in general, I think we're gonna be okay. It seems to me that federal infrastructure money, if we want to do a big water main or sewer line improvement or pump station, the USDA funds and things like that, they may be delivered differently, but those kind of things seem okay. Things that seem less okay, I think, are our quality of life. I think the organizations that are, you know, really on edge are nonprofits and stuff that are getting into the arts and humanities and things. Closest thing I can think of is recreation grants, things like that. You know, we've had, you know, probably $50,000 or $60,000 in years over the bleachers in the gym, for example, that, I think, at the dog park. So that could be, but there can also be additional pressures, like, when, when I was reading about the state's deliberations, it has nothing to do with what's going on nationally so much as just the own pressures that the state budget has. So they're seeing construction costs go way up, and they're looking at cutting back on what they're spending on transportation. Now, that is a big deal, because there's money associated with that. There's the pilot program where they keep, you know, moving the checkers around the board to see, how do you pay for pilot versus how do you pay for, I think, education comes, you know, out of the same pot, or part of it anyway. So I can see some of those things hurting us. And again, being at, you know, the bottom of the ladder, if the state says, oh, we're gonna cut pilot in half, and then we lose 100 grand or something like that, we don't, there's nowhere for us to go, you know, other than hackbears.
Luckily, though, you're saying there's nothing in the pipe right now. It's not like any of these, we basically have the money for, like, our fire and radio grants, or all that stuff is, we're, we're okay right now, right? Anything that we had lined up?
We, we've been reimbursed for the radios. The only chunk of money that is still out there is the most to $500,000 for the fire truck, and we've been assured that money is there, but the reason it's not in our pocket yet is because the fire truck's locked up. So that's, that's the only one that we had our PLEs up on.
All right, time to move on. We're gonna go into old business, and we have an action item to consider the purchase of a 2025 Caterpillar 926 loader for a net price of $187,600.
So jumping right into, let's start spending money. So I think I brought this up at the last meeting, we have a 2008. Very tired, and this is a piece of equipment that gets a lot of use, but we split it between the three departments, the water, sewer, and general fund budget, so that helps. I gave some different ways to buy it, 62.5 from each of those in cash. Apply for the MELF loan, that would be my least desirable way to go. Financing through the dealer, they currently have a five-year loan at 4.5%. So that would be $41,000 a year, split three ways, so that would be easy to absorb. And it is available, say, right, right after the beginning of the fiscal year. So I would be, this is something that we, we need, and my suggestion would be to go with the dealer financing in this and keep our money in the bank for, like, the next big item that's gonna come.
So I can make a motion that we follow through with this?
Okay. And I'll second that. Do we have any discussion?
In the motion, just say.
Oh, Tom, can you just kind of explain why the dealer financing is the best? I mean, I kind of get it, it seems like a halfway decent interest rate, and we're saving kind of some dry powder. But what's your take on why that's the best route?
Uh, 4.5 is a. Well, uh, four and a half is a decent rate these days. And we just got quotes on um. Uh, like loans, if we needed a, our tax anticipation note, that was more like five and a half or six. And the other thing is if we have money in the bank, it's invested as well. So the, the spread may be. Uh, one and a half, two percent to borrow the money. So I think uh, it is better. And the motion should say to um, you know, through a five-year loan. You can just leave it in a five-year loan and then.
So want me to remake that?
Sure.
I'm gonna make a motion. I make a motion that we purchase the twenty twenty-five Caterpillar nine twenty-six loader. And we finance it through the dealer, dealer with five payments at a four point five interest rate.
And I still second that. Any more discussion? Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 The Caterpillar has passed. Let's see, next up is another action item. Do consider the purchase of a twenty twenty-five freight liner truck for delivery. In little or more than eighteen months.
So the deal here is the cabin chassis is currently available. There's, I don't know, have somebody backed up. Um. So we could buy that now and then that puts us in line for the adding the rest of the stuff in, by whoever the supplier is. So that can take about a year off. The arrival. So. Uh, as you can see, the. Um. The cabin chassis is a hundred and thirty thousand. The rest of it's about ninety-five. Uh, we'll get between uh, thirty and fifty on the trade. They said so that'll net us out somewhere fifty to fifty-five. When that's due, we don't have to pay for that upfront. But right now we do have the money to pay cash. So if we can ride that out and let some of our other vehicle loans. Pass before we get that, I think we can, we can go ahead and do that rather than borrow more. And. Again, I think this truck's two thousand and sixteen and so it will be at least ten years old before this one comes in. Um, again, it's not a luxury thing. It's, we need, we need this equipment.
All right.
Make a motion.
Okay.
I'm uh, making a motion that we go ahead and purchase. The cab that's available now with cash and that we plan on getting the dump body and other outfitting parts. Um. When. When we can.
I would second that. Do we have any discussion on the freight liner? Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 We're getting a freight liner.
Okay. Highway Department thanks you and all the residents that will be served by the Highway Department. Thank you. Um. Moving down into the town manager's report. Uh, last week the D R B met to consider the. Demolishing the two houses on National Street and replacing them with modular homes we've discussed. Um, the decision hasn't been written yet. I sat through the meeting and. Um, my expectation is that that uh, will pass, so there was no issue. So I wanna. Preempt their written decision, but I think that, that is looking good. So. To spend even more money, like um. It's not something that, that any action is taken tonight, but uh. In speaking with the, the developer. When we say we want the houses is when we get the. The technical drawings, this is exactly what it looks like. And, and there are, well, this is the house. We had some discussion, I think at the WIC meeting about. Uh, how much do you wanna do to like improve the appearance, better materials or not, kind of? At lea- at least for me, the concept is if we're doing these things to help improve the community, you can't build to the standard that's there now. That doesn't mean you can go way out of whack, but if you put really ugly houses. It's bad, you know, it's, that's, that's motivating people. So. Once the opinion is written, what I'm going to be doing is coming to the board and asking for approval. To purchase two houses. It'll be. I expect less than four hundred and fifty thousand. Right now the price is two ten apiece. But I do think that there's gonna be interest in doing. Some additional improvements to them, a porch to make them consistent with some of the other houses down there, for example. Um. And right now the recommendation is use our revolving loan funds that are. You know, off to the side, we haven't had a lot of activity in those. And if it does turn out to be have an activity that I would suggest we go. Borrow from our light fund bond to replenish our revolving loan fund, but we may not have to do that. So I'm just letting you know, that's coming down the pike. Again, you know, the next thing is, but once again, here's a lot of other equipment. Uh, put some financial. Numbers in the packet again today, just to show you how much money we have. How much money we have to spend, what the cash flow is like. But I think doing that uh, with the houses is gonna be a step in the right direction. And there was a fair amount of interest from the state when they were here for the apartment building. Um, and it kinda seems like. It's this kinda thing that's gotta happen if you wanna really move off the dime as far as. Meaningful houses. And there are other opportunities around town. As I've talked with um. The developer, we want this to work. If this works, we'd like to, I think there's gonna be community support to do more. So if it doesn't work, th- these will be the only two houses. So.
Yeah. I guess I'm really not understanding this well. I, I, maybe I need to go down to where National Street is and really look at these houses because off the top of my head, I can't visualize them. And so there's already houses down there and they're not in good shape, so we wanna get rid of them. Okay.
That's right.
So we're landlords now, right?
Uh, technically, no.
No.
Uh, WIC owns that other house.
Okay.
So.
So. Who's gonna own the modular houses? Would it be WIC?
No, the town's gonna.
It would be the town.
Yep.
So. Then we become landlords.
We do.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm, maybe I'm understanding. So how do we? I mentioned, I remember you saying one time during a meeting that. We would be landlords, but then if someone was interested in buying, they could build equity up and certainly would be going towards that house or whatnot. I'm a little confused. About that so that we can get out of the landlord business as a town.
So, but I'm hearing is you don't wanna be a landlord.
Well, I, I, yeah, I don't think it's necessarily the best thing for the town to be a landlord, in general.
Uh, no, I, you know, it's not just, just for your benefit only, that, that's one of the houses.
I don't know. Oh, okay. That's actually the one I thought it was.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with that house.
You wouldn't be.
If I brought you down, you'd be like.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's on a little back street, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, across the street.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay. I mean, that would help me visualize what's happening down there more if I went down there and actually down it, I think.
Sure, but. Sorry for all of you folks out there. Ryan, go on Google Maps, fifteen. And twenty-nine National Street.
I looked at, do you want me to share them? Or do you?
Oh, sure, if you're.
Uh, oh, you know what? I'm on my phone, not on my computer.
Okay.
So there's the other ones. But they're basically, they're basically shacks, Mary, that.
Yeah, he's showing us a picture now, Ryan.
Yeah, and if you can see. One of the angles shows it from like ten years ago and you can see just the, even that vacant lot, the uh. The change that's happened down there.
I'll take a walk down there to kinda get a better feel for it.
And uh.
Now, are these the ones that are in the flood zone also?
They are.
Flood plain? And we were mitigating that by, were there exemptions or something? Are you saying or?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, it was kind of a bit of a conversation. It wasn't a.
Picture says a thousand words.
Ryan.
I think one of the advantages here, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but. A big. Value to the town is that in these high-density areas per square foot, they bring the most tax dollar value back to the town. So like in that very high-density area, uh, there's much more uh. Tax dollars generated per square foot than you say in like. Uh.
Correct.
One of the new, newer modern neighborhoods, right? And then also, but the thing is like. We're in a unique position as a government entity where. Yeah, we'd like to break even from this at some point and somebody builds some value, like rent to own almost. Tom, I think is kinda sorta what you described it and then allow them to. To kinda chip away at the purchase price so where that somebody could buy this eventually. In a little, you know, in some amount of time, get it off of our books. But what we're doing is. In a way subsidizing some growth that would never happen otherwise because there's no, from a private equity standpoint, there's no. It doesn't make sense to try to uh. Put. Buildings there in those spots. Is that kinda where I'm at, Tom?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's more of a rent to own kinda thing. Well, I mean, I understand that concept.
Yeah, well, we'll say that's layer two. Layer one is. Oh, Mary, maybe move. Hang on. Okay. Here we go. That house?
Mm-hmm.
The town, WIC owns that one.
Okay.
Okay, so it's flood compliant because it's looked it up and all the mechanicals are above the flood elevation. And the other elevation's about the same. That.
People still have to buy, even though they're doing that, they still have to buy flood insurance, don't they? Or do they?
Significantly reduced. Like, let's say. The mortgage company makes you, so if you pay cash, you don't. But let's just say if your house was. Gonna be six feet underwater, maybe you're gonna pay four thousand a year. You elevate it, then you pay like eight hundred dollars. This is what that house looked like before we did it in two thousand and seventeen. So. The, the, and it's like Ryan pointed out, with all of these things, they're, they're not big houses, but if you're getting twenty-five hundred or three thousand dollars in a footprint of where. Only one house is somewhere else and you're getting a utility bill for each of those. The municipality is in a unique position to get additional income essentially forever. And the other side of it is. If you don't. Then the neighborhood just falls in on itself and you lose all of that. The, the problem with all of these, I think when we did that house, we spent somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty thousand dollars and it appraised for. I don't know, sixty-five? So, and that's gonna be the same things with these other ones. If we spend two hundred and twenty-five on it, they'll, they'll praise for one twenty-five. So somebody can't go to the bank. Or they're not gonna put that much money down in order to do it. So. The town is stepping in to say, well, do you want it? You know, it's kinda another one of those vision things. Do you want us? To go like, I guess back in the seventies or eighties, they got some federal money and they knocked down a whole bunch of these houses. Um, and now you can't rebuild them again. And the idea from, you know, I don't know if it's urban legend or not, is we wanna knock them down because if there's a fire. They'll all burn, they're all too close. So instead of having houses right next to each other, we have. Car full of gasoline house, car full of gasoline house. So I'm not sure the plan. Unfortunately, nothing's ever burned down, but um. The, and again, this was, that house was done in two thousand and seventeen. And it was talked about since like two thousand and fifteen. So we're ten years into that and we've gone through a lot of different ways to give these lots away. Uh, but everybody's gonna be upside down in it. So.
So that house per se, WIC still owns it. The people, nobody ever bought it, even though we were trying to sell it. We.
Uh, it was a half-hearted effort to try to sell it.
Okay.
So there's, again, when the vision gets into this. The, I know the idea was. It get somebody in the house, so we started getting rent. And I think it's the same person that's been there the entire time. And so on that side, it's all worked out well. As far as I know, there hasn't been any interest in buying it, but. If uh, WIC wanted to or the town wanted to, we could look at it and say, well, we put a hundred and forty into it and we've collected. I don't know, fifty thousand in, in rent, so let's put it on the market for eighty thousand dollars. And you know, we're whole. We don't own it anymore. And. That, that can continue on, but the private market isn't building houses because they don't pencil out on the finances. So is it ideal for the town to be owning it? I would prefer not, but from a practical matter, nothing happens. But we have a property management company that does it. They go in. It's just a matter of, everything's fine when it's fine. It's not fine when it's not. So. But housing authorities are pretty common, yeah, during bigger cities. Not that they have the best reputations, but.
I would imagine though, if, if we were doing the modular homes, you could actually promote it that way, like. I know you don't wanna use rent to own, but you know, promote it, that this is what we'd like someone, you know, think about doing it this way, right?
So the, the town, that you can essentially do whatever you want. There is, there's no string attached money. You have to be it for a certain one thing. Or the other, and you know, I know it may not be popular, but I hear. Housing isn't affordable, yet if nothing is for sale. Somebody's affording everything that's out there. So it's not an affordability, it's an availability issue. And it goes down a slippery slope when you start saying, well, we wanna put parameters. On what the rent's gonna be or you know, that kinda stuff. But if you. Build the house and you say, all right, here's the deal. Um. Sign a five-year contract that your rent's gonna be this much money and in five years you have a balloon payment, you could buy the house for whatever that number is. And somebody says, I'll take that. Well, then you're out of the business, essentially. Uh, and you take the money and just keep doing it before you know it, we're everywhere. And um, at the same meeting. Uh. They talked about moving the diner down Main Street. And part of that, uh, the lot that's contiguous to the, the Main Street lot going down to Central Street is owned by the same people. And they're talking about putting four houses down and behind that. So.
Finding where the diner is gonna go?
Yeah. Yeah, so diner will be sitting right up on Main Street and then.
I think there was a lot of room back there, but.
Well, I mean, then.
Surprise.
It is. What, and it's, I mean, I think it's pretty typical of, of the discussions is there was some conversation about lack of. Grass or, you know, that kinda thing. But the state is saying zero setbacks. We want density in the downtown. So you could say, well, I wouldn't wanna live there without a yard. Well, unless you were planning on buying it, what you wanna do didn't really matter. What did the rules say? And the board did a pretty good job of discussing what they would like. Versus what they're allowed to like, you know, that kinda thing. And I, I don't know if they need more information on that, but I accept, I expect that some version. Of whatever that design is, well, we'll come down that the diner will, will move and, and there'll be something, you know, built along the way. And uh, you know, I said, one of the state people had mentioned that it didn't seem like this modular concept was saving anybody any money. And my comment was, if you can sell a stick-built house for four hundred thousand dollars. But you can make a modular house for two hundred? Are you gonna sell it for two hundred? Why wouldn't you sell it for four hundred? You know, so. I think because we have a local contractor who's interested in the community, kinda new to the whole thing, can do the whole thing from the site work to dropping the house on. That we are seeing a, we'll say, interrupted repricing.
Mm-hmm. This was helpful, so thank for clarifying.
And I think on that, that idea that the modular thing doesn't save any money. It might not be like a huge value over stick-built, which I, I think now stick-built stuff has gone. Real expensive, but. It certainly saves you a lot of time in this type of process and that's. That ends up costing you a lot of money. So I mean, I think whoever said that is. Maybe from a standpoint, if you're gonna build your own, but, but for us, I think it's real easy to, we're doing a project like this and go. Hey, here's these things and they get delivered in eight weeks. I mean, that's a lot better than. Kinda build, stick build. I think there's some savings there within itself, when you agree, Tom?
Sure. Well, and having gone through it where uh, we intentionally renovated that house on Jarvis Street, just to see what it would take. Um, and it was no. Cheaper. To do that than it would have been just to plop something new on top. But like anybody who's built anything, you go in with one price and then, oh, look at what we found. There you go. I really don't like that. Can you put in? Different something. This is, here's the price. We're doing, we're demolishing it, we're putting in the, the flood compliant foundation, we're putting the house on top, we'll give you the keys. So that takes a lot of the uncertainty out of what this is gonna be. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just as a recap, as we are spending money, the loader has just been approved, the dump truck cab has just been approved. We still, as a reminder, have uh, the fire truck coming this way, that uh, a hundred and. Ninety thousand or so of the ARPA money between. ninety thousand or so of the ARPA money between that and the grant, so we will get that truck. We will lose a couple hundred thousand out of what's in the bank, but we won't incur any debt. Uh, we have the need of a ladder truck, which is the real, you know, big eight hundred pound gorilla and all that, um. And we have, uh, advanced care ambulance, that is something I expect sometime over the summer, I'll be coming and asking you for approval to buy that. And we're like, as it says, you know, um, we're talking maybe two and a half to three years for a delivery on, on that, so, uh, it's just a matter of staying current with not looking at all of these purchases in a silo. Okay?
All right.
Financial update?
Get your spent all that money.
Yeah, uh, it's easy, it's just a big zero.
Wow, it's zero.
There, there is a document that was in your packet, um. They seem like, are these touchscreens? They're not.
They're not.
That's what happens.
You think they are.
Uh-huh.
Do you want this? This is.
I got a paper copy.
Well, sure, what the heck?
Slide it on down.
Didn't bring my glasses. So this is what it looks like. The top part, just to make it simple, the top part essentially is our bank accounts. This is the money we have. Uh, and the activity that has taken place, like over the last, this is, as the end of March. So I won't go through the whole thing, but what this reflects is that, uh, we spent about one point three million out of the general fund for a variety of things. Uh, we made our, uh, budgeted contributions to the water and sewer capital, um, last month, so those numbers are reflected there. Uh, and we, uh, had to take money out of, uh, two of our revolving loan funds, because the, um, the arrangement is we collect the money for Cox House and, uh, Stoughton House. We collect the money, but the state could have got money back, so we made the payments back, and now that's done, they're all paid up and squared, and it shows you what the balances are, and the revolving loans, funds, our capital reserve, our, uh, reserve fund accounts, we have about four point two million dollars in the bank, in all of our various accounts. Sounds like a lot of money until you start spending it. Um, looking ahead between now and the end of the year, um, it looks like we'll need about two point one million dollars more than we're gonna have. And the second part of this is a fairly accurate, but more generalized reasonable, wait a minute, we've budgeted taxes to pay for so much, and we spent so much, so why are we not, why do we need to borrow money? And I'll do, I'll go down these, and you can ask me questions. Um, we run an ambulance service, and we bill after the service, we generally have somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and twenty-five thousand in, in accounts receivable. So it's on the, we, it shows up on the books when we bill it, but we don't collect the money. So we're normally carrying about two, we'll say two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in receivables. Uh, utility billing, um, ah, you got the wrong one.
Sure.
No, that doesn't work, right? You got the wrong one because I gave you the wrong one.
I was gonna say, it was the one you gave, Mr. Martin.
Yeah, well, don't you look.
I looked in the packet, I didn't see that yesterday.
Number nine. Um, yeah, I changed, I changed it earlier today, so, okay, here's where I scroll. You did, no, no, it, it was, it was, uh, last Monday, I had a, had a meeting this afternoon, now wait a minute, Natalia. Okay, sorry, folks. Wait, our readings are gonna go down. There, damn. Okay, so utility billing.
The hell?
Hang on. Maybe it is the right one.
No, 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 it can't be the right.
Hang on a second. Sorry.
Missing something. I looked yesterday, I printed out. I, the warrants and payables.
Yeah, that was there.
And, and then I didn't really see much of anything else, so I'm thinking, could this have been yesterday, and I went Monday to?
Maybe, or it could have been added, that part might have been added today.
Yeah, I always make sure, I always look at that packet right before reading.
Yeah.
I don't do it that way, I do it the night before.
Yeah.
Okay, but so here, here is.
I have a handful of hints here, so I don't miss something.
Did you look, can you look over here and see them there here? Under select board, here's, here is the packet right here. Yeah, I didn't, when I looked and got everything, like Monday, that wasn't there, I haven't seen that.
Oh, okay.
I, a lot of those things were, they were one of the three things.
It said financial, I'm not even seeing it in there.
I don't either.
But it was in mine today, um.
I'd like to see this.
This one, go this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, briefly.
Yeah.
Are we going there Thursday? Okay.
I wondered what we were gonna do.
I have an idea.
It was under finance report.
Oh, no.
And so this is what I had when I went to print today.
I'm just trying to figure out and make sure I'm not missing something when I get that, so it's, that's why I'm asking you guys.
I printed one for everybody. And this is a result of my, don't understand accounting, and no one else understands me. So looking at the bottom, now I'll update this packet if anybody wants to go back, the ambulance receivables, as discussed, is two hundred and sixty thousand. Utility work in progress, that's five hundred thousand. And what that means is, roughly speaking, the combined value of the water and sewer budgets is two million dollars. And we bill at the end of the quarter. So roughly speaking, we have incurred about a half million dollars in expenses each quarter that we have to carry before we bill. So we always have a half million dollars of call work in progress. Utility delinquencies, those are bills that have been spent and we have not been paid, so we're carrying that. Uh, accounts receivable are things that we bill for services, whether it's the shared, um, land use, um, the school resource officers, West Windsor, we also have about, uh, not to forget exactly how much, but we've loaned money to Bunker Hill to do some sewer repairs, waiting for them to get reimbursed from the state. So that's, again, money that we've spent, we haven't paid back yet. Um, property tax receivables, that's for the current year, um, the, when this was done by, at the end of March, the, the grace period ended the beginning of April. So as of the end of March, we had four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in this year's property taxes that hadn't been paid. In addition to that, we had sixty-five thousand in prior year's property taxes that hadn't been paid. If we ran that report today, now everything is delinquent. So, um, uh, property tax receivables would be zero because they have all moved, if we hadn't collected them by now, they have all moved to the delinquency. So whatever was outstanding as of whatever day that was, April, pent, or something like that, moves to the delinquent property taxes line. However you call it, you're in a little north of five hundred thousand in property tax delinquencies, again, we have to, um, cover that. So you see, that's about a million and a half dollars on, um, just the normal course of business that we have to have in order to pay our expenses before we get paid ourselves. And that goes up and down, uh, things that, uh, like, uh, if we get a grant, we have to buy the stuff first, like those radios, or we put out a couple hundred thousand before we got money back, we have to carry all that stuff. So that's why it's important when you look over here and you see our reserve fund, it's not just for rainy day things, it's for, we need cash to pull from back and forth. So what's gonna happen between now and the end of the year, we're gonna pay for the last couple of months of services, we are gonna pay the school one point one million dollars, and that, that is like when we haven't collected the taxes, we still have to pay the school. So we have to do that, and we're required to pay off our tax anticipation note from last year, which was one point two five million, by June thirtieth this year. So we're gonna have to come up with the money uh, from our savings to do that, and then July first, we'll get a tax anticipation note for the next year. Um, and that's something I think the interest is gonna be somewhere around sixty-five thousand dollars this year for the tax anticipation note, so that costs us money. Uh, if we had all that money in the bank, uh, it'd be earning us money when, you know, we can put them in, you know, three-month CDs and that kind of stuff, and earn money and get money back. And we certainly have made great strides in the amount of money that we have put in our savings accounts, but we're not to where they, you know, where we are. And those numbers are, are high because, uh, that ARPA money is in there, that nine hundred and ninety-one thousand in reserve, there's gonna be money coming out of that uh, in the not-too-distant future to bring that back down. So we're spending money, we're saving money, the budgets are, you know, we're, we're gonna be a little, a little bit of a surplus or a little bit of a deficit as it stands right now. It's, you know, all of the magic when we talk at the end of the year, saying, cut everything out, uh, there hasn't been any, you know, everything, as I say when I do it, is their estimates, and it will just move to the low end of the estimate, and hopefully everything doesn't go wrong at the same time, and not everything has gone wrong at the same time. But I, it's became apparent that the community wanted a dump day. They wanted a dump, they would be more angry not to have a dump day than they would be if I had to come to you and say that we're seven thousand dollars deficit, so we have to pull something out of the reserve fund. So, um, then this coming year is gonna be same way. No, the, the only saving race for the fiscal twenty-six is we are putting, you know, a little over two hundred thousand into our savings accounts, but this current year, we put nothing in our savings accounts and cut everything back. So, and we had some unforeseen expenses. But we'll be okay.
Circle of life, baby.
There you go.
Are we up to sign orders? Were you done with the financial?
I am.
All right. Do we have a motion to sign order?
Make the motion to sign orders.
Ah, there's the right one, I just found it. Don't you want to start over again? Uh, and we also have an executive session that we will be taking a vote on, I expect, when it comes along, so.
Is there any discussion on signing the orders? Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're gonna sign some orders. I mean, public comments for items not on the agenda. And we'll do our board member comments, then, motion of success, executive second. Ryan, do you wanna lead us off tonight with board member comments?
Yeah, I just, uh, hope that as we push forward that we can get some honest and open feedback from citizens, and like Jeffrey said, we'd, we'd like it ahead of time and not just
Mm-hmm.
people being upset after the fact, try to pay attention, and, and we're all pretty easy to get a hold of, so, you know, give us that, that feedback, and also, um, you know, as we talked early in the meeting about what town looked like years ago, uh, again, I think that's a lot to do, there's a lot of people in town that have contributed to that positively, but I think, you know, Tom's leadership and his vision has kind of really led the way on that, and it's been, it's kind of crazy when you look back at some of those old pictures of what, what town looked like, and the characters that were hanging out on the street corners, and you couldn't even walk around the mile square, so, um, yeah, thank you for that.
Jeffrey? I don't really have anything to say. Um, I'm grateful that we are able to have these conversations and body what we need, and I would just encourage folks to communicate with us.
Don't have much. Where's this red? April is gray. The next time we meet, it's gonna be May. That's all I got today. Emma would have appreciated that way more than you guys.
May I? Um, I really don't have anything either, except to encourage people to, when you see us out and about at times, if you think it's an appropriate time and we're walking or something, hit us up and tell us what you think. I think we're all really open to that, so um, I'm looking forward to maybe doing something with a couple of us in different places all over.
It actually happened to me this week, I was walking in Paradise Park, and someone stopped me and had some feedback.
And you know, it's, it is, it's wonderful. That's the time you get sometimes from people.
Yeah.
So, that's all I've got.
All right, so.
There's motions on the second page.
I, I will move to find that premature public knowledge about confidential discussion of pending and threatened litigation would cause the town to suffer a substantial disadvantage. I move that we enter into executive session to discuss pending and threatened litigation under one VSA three thirteen A one E, and to invite the town manager into the executive session.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
About I, but Emma sent us an email saying that she would not vote I for the first comment.
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to make that clear.
We are moving into executive session. It, it is seven forty-nine, and we are out of executive session.
Hey, and I am looking for a motion for the board, uh, supporting the settlement uh, with former employee Tyler Edwards, as recommended by our town attorney, and agreed to buy the bargaining unit of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, ten thousand to be paid by the town, two thousand five hundred to be paid by the union. Make the motion.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jeffrey?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that has passed, and I'm also going to adjourn this meeting at seven fifty.